Nobody has a...
What's yours was built in? All your stuff is built in.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of August 13th, 2013 is now called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we request that all cell phones be turned off or put into the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance, one acknowledgment, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, five items under business and finance, three items under operations, one item under teaching and learning, three superintendent's recommendations, one of which is for good cause. Dr. Graham, please provide an explanation for this item.
It was necessary, based on data that we reviewed between the beginning of school and this week. We needed to make some adjustments to some administrative assignments, and there's a domino effect when you do that, so there were several people that had to be moved from one school to another.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. As presiding officer, I find that there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. Also on the agenda are four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? So moved by Mrs. Dozier, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five zero. This evening, Mr. Armstrong will deliver the invocation, after which, Mrs. Dozier will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you please join me in a moment of silence for all men and women fighting for our freedom over here? Thank you.
At this time, please welcome Master Sergeant Ignacio Villa Verde. I hope I didn't butcher your name. Army instructor of ROTC program at Riverdale High School, who will introduce Cadet Major Ryan Daly presenting the colors this evening. Master Sergeant Villa Verde retired after 21 and a half years of service as Senior Healthcare NCO Combat Medic. He holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Puerto Rico and in psychology. He has served in the district since 2012 January.
Thank you, ma'am. The national colors for our political allegiance tonight will be presented by Cadet Major Ryan Daly from Riverdale High School Junior ROTC Program. Cadet Daly is the battalion commander, and he is starting his fourth year in junior ROTC. Cadet Daly has been a squad leader, a company first sergeant, and a battalion commander sergeant major. Cadet Daly has a 3.5 GPA. He has been a member of the color guard, drill team, raider team, and rifle team for three years. Cadet Daly is pursuing an Army ROTC college scholarship and hopes to attend the Arizona State University next fall. Ladies and gentlemen, please join us in reciting the political allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, Mrs. Morgan will do the character education word for August.
Character word for August is responsibility. Accountability for your personal choices, obligations, and duties. If it is to be, it is up to me. And I'm going to quote from Abraham Lincoln, "You cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today."
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, please address the agenda item of public comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted that to me before the meeting, you'll be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the school board this evening, the school board chair, Ms. Fish, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. Rules concerning public comment of the school board are posted at the back of the room and include the requirement that any speaker wishes to address the school board, to endorse a purchase of a product or a service in which that speaker has a personal interest, the speaker must reveal that interest before making comment to the board. The school board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the conclusion of public comment time, the school board chair may address concerns raised by speakers, or may assign responsibility to the superintendent to do so. The time allow per speaker is three minutes. Ms. Fisher, I have one card this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who did not complete a card and wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side? Mr. Martin, please call the card.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, school board members. Dr. Graham, thank you very much. Since January of this year, I've traveled through Lee County as much as possible. We started down in Bonita Springs, worked our way up to Astero, and then from Astero, we went down over to Cape Coral, and then we're moving up Lehigh and Alva. We haven't been there yet. And what I've been doing since January is I've been collecting information and listening to the comments and concerns of the people in Lee County. And to keep this on a positive note, I've spoken with many small business owners, and what I've heard from them is, there's one school board member, Mrs. Dozier, you were called out particularly. They mentioned you as one of the school board members who kept your promise of ensuring that the contracts try to... the contracts stay here in Lee County, that the monies that we... that we're using for our school district, that they stay here as much as possible and the contracts stay within these small businesses. So you were mentioned as someone who's... who kept their promise and is still doing that. And I'd like to thank the school board members, too, for continuing to think of small business owners when you're making these contracts and awarding these contracts to others. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Dotrice. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Dozier.
I have none this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I have none.
Mr. Armstrong.
I originally had one, but Dr. Graham answered the question for me, so I have none now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scott.
Yes, 4C1, on page 23.
C1, and I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of the pulled item?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Scott. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. We have one pulled to address. 4C1, is there a motion for the pulled item? Oh, Mrs. ... Dr. Graham, would you please read 4C1?
I recommend board approval of the general personnel recommendations, including administrative certificated support and substitute staff and out-of-field appointments.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the pulled item?
So moved.
Support.
Scott, supported by Mrs. Morgan. Okay, discussion, please. Mr. Scott.
I'll refer you to page 32. That item. Bottom of the page, subtitled is leave of absence. The first name on that list is Kathleen Dooley, Littleton Elementary, currently, and the reason for leaving is, quote, "Charter school employment." We had a similar situation about a year ago with regard to a principal, North Fort Myers High School, who was leaving and had accepted a job at Oasis Charter High School. It was my position at that time and remains my position that I don't discourage anybody from finding a job wherever they'd like to find one. But the continuing... It's like somebody's got their foot in one pool and in another pool, and they haven't decided which pool they want to be in. And this is sort of a setup where if she ever wants to come back, we're going to have to find a place for her, whether that's available or not at the time she wants to come back. My position is if you want to take another job, take another job. And therefore, I would recommend that we do not grant the leave of absence to Ms. Dooley, but rather accept her resignation and her movement onto a charter school of her choice. So I would make a motion that we separate... divide the item and deny to grant a leave to... of absence to Kathleen Dooley.
So you have a motion to divide, which is just to separate that item out for a separate vote.
Right. Right. Okay. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Seconded by Mr. Armstrong. Any other discussion?
No discussion on a motion to divide.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like, sign? Okay, the motion to eliminate her from the list...
Now, the motion to divide is passed.
Motion to divide.
So now you have two separate motions.
Is passed by zero.
And the first one that you address is the motion for the superintendent's recommendation minus the item that was separated.
Right.
Just everything else.
Okay, so is there a motion for...
And you have that motion, Ms. Fisher.
For me?
You already have that motion.
We have that.
The one that's been made is now divided.
Is there any further discussion on this evening's motion? 4C1. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like, sign? Motion carries, five zero. Next on the agenda...
You go with the motion.
Take.
Now you need that item now.
The second part of that motion, which is now to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant the leave of absence.
For the one person on page 32.
Okay.
Yes.
Grant it or not grant it?
Grant it, sir, because that's the recommendation. That was the initial motion, to grant, to approve the superintendent's recommendation. So the motion you have before you at this point is to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to grant the leave of absence.
Okay. So on the motion to approve the superintendent's granting the leave of absence to the person divided from the list...
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Okay. I didn't hear a second, though.
There was a second.
Yeah, it was seconded.
Mr. Armstrong. Okay. Mrs. Dozier.
And I was here when we had the discussion, and I think the previous discussion was around an administrator. And I think that an administrative position is quite a bit different than a teaching position. I think every year, we end up hiring... I don't know how many teachers we employ each year, but I know that we have... because of attrition, we lose a lot because of moving away. We lose some because of retirement. We lose some because they're staying home to raise their families, one thing and another. But we're all... we always seem to be in need of teachers, and I would be very cautious of us setting a precedent to not allow teachers to take a leave or take an opportunity. So I will be supporting the superintendent's recommendation to grant this teacher the leave.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Mr. Scott.
She's not taking a leave. She's taking another job, and that's my bottom line to it.
But she is taking a leave.
Well, that's because that's the way the policy exists today, except that the board can overrule that. She's taking another job. That's the bottom line. And if she wishes to take another job, I don't have any problems with her deciding that that's what she wants to do. But I don't think it's the board's responsibility or the district's responsibility to allow her to snap back at any such time in the future that she wishes to do so. This is a business decision she's making for whatever reasons. So I'm going to oppose the recommendation because I don't think it's appropriate for somebody to take, in essence, two jobs. I'm leaving, but I'm not really leaving. That was my position with the principal. It would be my position with any other employee in the district. A leave of absence is, from my point of view, an illness, birth of a child, you can name a number of reasons that would be good for a leave of absence, but to take another job, I can't... I can't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion? Mrs. Morgan.
I would just like to hear from the superintendent about the recommendation to put someone on leave as opposed to...
There is a policy that allows it, but it says the board may overrule it. And if the board chooses to say it's... and it says employees, it doesn't distinguish between teacher and administrator. It says employees may take up to three years' leave to go to a charter school, but the board can decide that they don't want that, which is what Mr. Scott's doing. It's up to the board whether or not to approve it.
But I'm asking your opinion.
Oh, my opinion?
Seat got hot now, didn't it?
Such a diplomatic answer to begin with. You have two opposing points over here.
I'm going to be really frank. I think employees who choose to go work with charter schools are choosing another job. That's my opinion, for what it's worth.
It's worth a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, could you address the policy as to seniority and... Okay.
Your school board's policy, that it's the charter school policy that addresses this issue 2.28, and it states that employees of the district may take leave for up to three years to accept employment in a charter school upon approval of the board, meaning that it is within the discretion of the board, and shall maintain seniority accrued in the district, meaning that if you do approve the leave of absence for this purpose, the seniority is maintained.
Thank you. Any of the... Did you have anything else, Mr. Martin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of supporting the superintendent's recommendation to allow the leave of absence for employment at the charter school, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion fails, four to one. Now, moving right along, next on the agenda is superintendent's recommendations. The first one is the good cause item. Dr. Graham, please give us your recommendation.
I recommend board approval of the following administrative personnel. Change of assignment of Ronald Davis Sunshine Elementary from principal on assignment to principal effective August 13th, 2013. Transfer Benjamin Osman from Bay Shore Elementary to Pelican Elementary Assistant Principal effective August 19th, 2013. Transfer Mark Madonna from Manatee Elementary to Bay Shore Elementary Assistant Principal effective August 13th, 2013. Transfer Michelle Lapira Robinson from Pelican Elementary to Manatee Elementary Principal effective August 13th, 2013. Transfer and change of assignment of Jill Lazeo from Manatee Elementary Principal to Principal on Assignment effective August 13th, 2013. Transfer and change of assignment of Rebecca Savage from Staff Development, Professional Development Leadership Specialist to Manatee Elementary Assistant Principal effective August 13th, 2013. Transfer and change of assignment of Edwin Carter from Student Services Principal on Assignment to Pelican Elementary Principal effective August 13th, 2013.
Thank you, Dr. Graham. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move second.
By Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Dr. Graham, would you like to, at this time, introduce the people who are here in the audience who are...
If you are here and your name was just called, if you want to stand, we'd like to introduce you and recognize you and welcome you to your new position. And I understand that... Is Mitchell Player here? Yes. Mitchell is Assistant Principal at Island Coast. Jennifer Mizowitz? Hi, and she is Assistant Principal, Orange River Elementary. Principals, thank you for joining them. And Rebecca Savage, Assistant Principal, Manatee Elementary. Welcome. And Ron Davis, Principal, Sunshine Elementary. Ron Davis got sucked in by five-year-olds. That's all I can tell you. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of you. Okay, next on the agenda is the legislative platform.
I recommend board adoption of the 2014 legislative platform for the school district of Lee County.
Members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Scott and supported by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? Mr. Scott.
I think that what you have in front of you represents what we had discussed at the last meeting when Mr. Sarah was here, and it took into consideration the input from board members at that time, and lays out 10 items that we will have on our district legislative agenda. Several of those will be brought forward to the consortium for consideration for the consortium's agenda as well. Not all of the items, because some are very specific to us, particularly the one looking for a referendum to expand the board, but the bulk of it will, in fact, go to the consortium as well. So I appreciate everybody's work and input, not only board members, but also staff members, Dr. Graham, for their input in getting us to this stage. And I think it is prioritized the way we agreed at the last meeting it would be prioritized, and lays out a good plan of attack and conversation and lobbying for us as we go forward into the next session.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any other discussion, board members? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five zero. Item C, Dr. Graham.
I recommend board approval of the contract with the Lee County Lacrosse Alliance to provide for the continued expansion of lacrosse programs in our high schools per the attached agreement. The effective dates of the contract are August 1st, 2013, through July 31st, 2014.
Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dozier.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion?
I didn't see the attachment, so I assume that they're going to kick in a million dollars a year.
Better look at it. It was given to you just before we started the meeting. Not exactly, but...
I just saw them sinking their seats out there.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mrs. Dozier?
Yes, sir. A million dollars is right up our alley.
Two for two.
They have it.
Mrs. Dozier. I would like to say that this is a very good partnership that we have established, and I think that the students are the ones that are benefiting. So I thank you for bringing this to us. I think, when did you bring it? Three years ago? Three? Was it... wasn't it three, I believe?
Two years.
Two years ago, okay. And it seems like it was longer than that, because it's been such a successful program. And I will be supporting this, and I just thank you for your involvement and for your... for persevering when at some times it looked like it was a very dark day, that things were not going to be approved, and it is going to be my pleasure to do this this evening. So thank you.
And I just want to say, congratulations. You guys are the epitome of parent involvement, and it definitely benefits the kids in all of our districts. So thanks again. Okay. At this time, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, five zero. Next on the agenda is board attorney's recommendations. Anything this evening?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And now we go to board members' comments and reports. Mrs. Dozier.
Thank you. Well, I want to start this evening with congratulations to all of our principals, all of our assistant principals, and our teachers for a job well done. In fact, I had the opportunity to speak to a group last night, and I actually had Dr. Graham and Ms. Morgan with me, and I told them, I said, you know, it's interesting, don't take offense, men, gentlemen, but I said, if you want organization, you want well-planning, and you want everything as smooth and everything in place at the right time in the right place, you ask a woman to do it. And everybody laughed. But everybody knows that this was probably... and I know that I've said this before, but this was probably one of the smoothest openings, I think, that we have had in this district. And the way I can tell that is because I came up here on Friday afternoon, after I had seen people in action, seen schools, seen students not in hallways, not lost, and so forth, and I said, "How is it going?" to the secretaries. And usually, by the end of the second day, they're about... you know, you can always find out from the custodians, the bus driver, and the secretaries what's really happening. And they all looked at 2:00 in the afternoon. Now, they looked fresh as daisies, like they had, you know, and they said, "We've only had four phone calls." And I said, "Really?" And they said, "Yes. It's just unbelievable." Because usually, the first couple of days of school, we have hundreds and thousands of... and literally, you know, when you think about 86-plus thousand students being transported, well, all of them are transported in some way, but you've got a lot of phone calls. You have a lot of... you have a lot of... you have the potential for a lot of missteps. Evidently, there were no missteps. So congratulations to everyone for a fantastic opening. I want to congratulate the Lee County Association of Professional Substitutes for your in-service well-done. You always do that, I think, every year. And I've talked to, actually, a couple of substitutes, and I've heard that they find that training to be very worthwhile. In fact, somebody who is... has been around for a long time even said that they learned something, and it's always good to be able to learn new things. In fact, she's sitting out there right now. Let's see. Oh, and I also had the opportunity to attend some art in services, and, you know, I've always said that, you know, the arts is something that definitely keeps students inspired about coming to school every day. If you only had reading, writing, and arithmetic, and didn't have any art, didn't have any music, didn't have any recess, it would make for a very dull, dull boy and girl. And I know one year, we had to pull back on the arts because we literally had... we were so short of funding, and we were able to reestablish those classes. And I know that those teachers worked diligently, and they definitely put a smile on those children's faces, and they do support the other teachers in the classroom, so I'm just so happy and they're in-service. They were just so bubbly and so excited about everything that was going on, and I just wish all of them the very best. Thank you, Mr. Dotrice, for your comments. I appreciate the fact that the vendors out there are paying attention and listening, and I know that that is something that this board has been very diligent about wanting to do as much business locally as we can, because that's the only way that us being the second-largest employer in town, that is the only way that we can help to energize the economy, if you will. And that is through being local, helping local, if we possibly can. So thank you. Board members, also, at... I don't remember which meeting, but it was at a meeting either here or at the organization meeting, but I was... I said that I would like to maintain my position as the representative to the FSBA Board of Directors. And then I said to Ms. Morgan, "Well, we need an associate director, and you might enjoy doing that." And I believe she said that she would, and the only thing is, we never got a letter up to FSBA. So we didn't take a formal vote. And when you take a vote, I guess that's when the letter goes. So we didn't have a letter. And the only reason I know that is because I cannot attend the president's retreat, and so I asked Ms. Morgan to do it, and they asked me, "Where was our letter?" And I said, "Oh, well."
Okay.
So if we could get that out, I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right, and... Do we need to take the vote then now?
Well, probably.
Or get a consensus? Okay?
Well, that was what I had told... we had a change in the secretaries at FSBA, and I told Jan, but with the new secretary, I guess it never got recorded or whatever, and we just... they want everything to be official, so they wanted to have a letter on file.
Okay, then, if everyone has consensus, Susan and I will prepare the letter and get it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Morgan?
I just, I read something in the news press today, and I just want to, I think it's a great quote, "You don't build a better brand based on who comes through the front door. You build a brand based on who goes out the back door at graduation." And Ms. Dozier mentioned that we were at a meeting last night, and someone came up to me and said, "I don't care about Common Core. I care about the deliverables. I want to know what it is that Common Core is going to do for me as a former retired executive, for the employer, for the community college, for the university. What are you guys going to do?" And I said, "Well, I think that really is the point behind Common Core, to ensure that the people who leave the Lee County Public Schools are graduates that we can be proud of and the community can be proud of." And so, I'm just going to hold on to that quote. And that brought to mind another comment that someone had made to me a while back, and I thought I'd sort of talk about this before we have our workshop. And the person said to me, "I'm still an advocate of proving that the community gets $13,000 of investment benefit for student, per student. Is the system producing tomorrow's leaders, citizens, employees, parents, and taxpayers, and how good is it doing?" And I thought, you know, we really need to have a conversation about Common Core, because I think some of these questions are of genuine interest to our voters and taxpayers, and I think looking at outcomes and talking about Common Core in that way may resonate with the community more than just having a generic conversation about Common Core. So I throw that thought out for the other board members. And that's the end of my comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick things. First, I want to say thank you to Wink for Stuff the Bus. I went to that Saturday morning. Sorry I missed you, Dr. Graham, but what can I say?
Get up earlier than I do.
I get up and get going, but it was a great event. I was amazed when I heard how much supplies that we got, and it's just amazing how much the community comes out and supports the school district and these students. The other thing was, first day of school, you know, I was kind of proud, because as my kids go off to school, but shortly after that, I get a phone call, and I'm thinking, "Oh, no, here we go. It's going to start." And I get a parent who calls me and says, "Mr. Armstrong, I just wanted to call and tell you, thank you." I said, "Excuse me? Thank you." They said, "The Transportation Department had a mix-up with my kids. They kept me informed, told me what was going on the whole time, made sure my kid got to school on time to the right school, and I wanted to say thank you." And I made sure I called Robert Morgan and Dr. Graham and informed them that the very first phone call I got was a parent who actually called and complimented the school district. And I thought that spoke volume in itself. Thought the day, I might have had two or three other phone calls, and nothing really that bad. It was very, it seemed to go together very smoothly, and I was very pleased with how things have been going. And I know my kid's very happy right now, so I'm good. The other thing I did want to discuss with my colleagues and Dr. Graham is, I've beat this drum before in the past, and I'd like to beat it again tonight, is our insurance plan, our family insurance plan, and it seems, I continue to hear the same thing, is it's so high, some of these people are just working just to pay for their insurance for the family. And it's disheartening when you hear some of these people that they don't actually bring home a paycheck, that all their money goes straight to the insurance. So I'd like to ask Dr. Graham if we can start looking into maybe finding different ways or come up with different ideas to help these families out in our, for the family insurance, and see what we can do. If you can maybe talk to your cabinet, bring some ideas back in a briefing meeting, and maybe start trying to do a little bit more and see what we can do, because I know there's other larger organizations out there that contribute more, so I think we'd like to see what we can do to help our families out, because in essence, we're just one big family anyways. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Mr. Scott?
Yeah, I want to thank Leila and her group in the...
Student assignment.
Student, thank you. Student Assignment Office. I had only two communications from parents who were unhappy, and both of them were very recently relocated into the area. And the system is different. The choice system is different than they had experienced with in the past. It was explained well to them. They, I believe, are on the verge of, because of where they are on the waiting list, probably going to get their kids into schools where they really want them. But it was well explained to them. But beyond that, to have only two of those kinds of calls was incredible, as far as I'm concerned. But it was out-of-towners, and I think when it comes to the Hertz discussion that we've had before, that's one of the difficulties that those folks are having in understanding school choice down here, and being able to reconcile that in their mind. Timing is everything, and somebody who shows up very late is likely not to get the first choices they want, but I think she and her staff did a great job of getting people where they wanted to go. I had a chance to be in a couple of schools on the first day, and I will echo what everybody else has said. When I went out to East Lee County, I didn't know whether they were open or not. It was quiet until the bell rang, and then I was told to get out of the way and get up against the locker, because it could be trouble. But things were very calm, very smooth, and I congratulate everybody involved. I happened to go to Alva, since it's right around the corner from me. The new name they are embracing, they've got new signs, they've got T-shirts, they've got the old nickname back again. And what I saw there was a real team atmosphere. I actually saw it in both schools, a real team atmosphere having been developed. And next year, before school starts, you might want to go to Alva, where they have a big wild breakfast a couple of days before school starts, and they have chocolate gravy and biscuits.
Oh, my word.
Which I have never had before, but, and it doesn't sound so great, but when you taste it, it's pretty good.
I was thinking it sounded pretty nice.
Kind of think the same thing.
So I congratulate everybody for the work they did in preparing for, because that stuff just doesn't happen. You don't throw the door open, expect it to go that way. It was preparation, and so everybody gets credit for having been very well-prepared for the start of school this year. And any other comments that I might want to make? I'm going to hold them for our workshop on Thursday, that I think will be a more appropriate place for me to communicate them.
Thank you. Okay, I have just a couple of things. It is a great day in Lee County schools. I had an opportunity on the first day to visit several schools, and North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, Patriot, Gulf Elementary, Gulf Middle, Hector Cafarada, the two Trafalgar's, and they all had an amazing start. Everybody was happy, no children were lost. And I, too, had a call from a parent early in the morning who said, "The bus was on time." So my first thanks to Mr. Morgan and his staff. Continuing on with our community partnerships, I had an opportunity to attend the Goodwill Life Academy Ribbon Cutting. They have their own new home now, and the reception and the support that they got from their community and the involvement of their students, who are all very special needs students, was more than heartwarming. And I got to meet an old friend there, who was a former superintendent, Ray Podorff. And he said, "You know, what is it all about?" He said, "It's the same thing for teachers and for support staff and for parents and for superintendents, and it is that you've got to love kids, and they have to be the first priority." And it seems to me like that's exactly where we're going now, and I'm really happy about that. I also had an opportunity to visit the Pace Center for Girls. They're under new leadership, and they're working on improving their academic program, as well as looking at transportation possibilities to be able to include students from further west, south, and east, who are in need of specialized students for at-risk student, and specialized services for at-risk students. And I want to thank Mr. Morgan and his staff, and the other staff who have been involved in meetings with Pace for their efforts in trying to support the needs of these kids. I am lucky to be a member of the Board of Directors for the Drug Free Coalition, and they are now working to increase student participation and involvement. The Drug Free Coalition empowers children to live drug-free lives. On October 19th, at Lakes Park, they're going to be having a 5K run and family fun walk. Think about joining them for that. They are welcoming new advisory council members and to include our very own Superintendent, Dr. Nancy Graham. So thank you, Dr. Graham, for agreeing to join the advisory council. I had an opportunity to come to the district leadership meeting, the Thursday, I know it was a two-day meeting, and to hear Mr. Murray Banks and to talk with some of the administrators and to feel the excitement and see the hard work that went into getting prepared for that first day of school. So I want to thank you, Dr. Graham, for inviting me to attend that. In fact, it was so good, I was only going to stay an hour, but I stayed the whole day, and really, really got a lot out of it. The Foundation for Lee Schools had their annual meeting yesterday, and they were highlighting some of the programs that they continue to provide for our thriving schools. Take Stock in Children, the Stamp Mentor Program, anti-bullying programs, and Dancing Classrooms, which is a sight to behold in itself. And I just wanted to thank Marshall Bauer and his very adept staff for all of their hard work in keeping those programs going. I've been invited to join the Childcare of Southwest Florida Early Childhood Learning Coalition. And the Early Childhood Coalition is saying to us, "Kindergarten is too late. Ask me why." Kindergarten is Too Late is a venture led by the Childcare of Southwest Florida Incorporated to inform and educate you and me of the importance of high-quality early childhood experiences that focus on learning fundamentals while kids learn how to think and how to work together. Children in our community who don't receive a high-quality early childhood education are 25% more likely to drop out of school, 40% more likely to become a teen parent, 50% more likely to be placed into special education, 60% are likely never to attend college, and 70% are more likely to be arrested for a violent crime. The connections from preschool to reading proficiency to high school completion could not be clearer, so I hope that we will all support the partnership with the Early Childhood Coalition. And now, at a meeting when we were working on Dr. Graham's contract, we had said that we were going to initiate a superintendent search, and we're looking at a timeframe here that needs some attention. The board directed the staff to put out a request for proposals, and procurement would need about 30 days to prepare for that. So if it is our desire to retract that direction, that must be before the end of the month. And Mr. Martin will be available to answer questions or give direction. We can discuss this now, or we can put it off to our workshop, but we do have to have our decision made by September 1st. Any comments? Mrs. Dozier?
I would like for us to discuss this Thursday at our workshop.
Say at the workshop?
I think this is a good workshop topic.
Okay, great.
All right.
Fine, thank you very much. We'll discuss it at the workshop, and we're looking forward to that. That's all I have this evening. Mr. Martin?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
This evening. And Dr. Graham?
Well, thank you for all the kudos about the first day of school. Obviously, as you said, it takes a lot of people. Principals and assistant principals worked really, really hard. They took the things we talked about at district leadership to heart, took it back to their staffs, and have heard many, many positive things about the overall environment and the attitude as the year has begun. And I'm proud and excited, and thank you to those that are in the room that were involved in that, but I have sent thank yous to the administrators to let them know we are grateful for their work. And for the people in this building, I think sometimes we forget that it takes all of us, and everybody's worked really hard. So I'm excited, glad the first day is over. Everyone got there, got fed, and got home, and that was the goal of the day. So now, we're moving along, and the school year is underway, as far as I'm concerned. We have lots to do, and we have some things to fix and some things to maintain, and we're going to work to do that. So I'm grateful for your support of everybody in this district, because it really does begin with you, and so I'm grateful that you are willing to acknowledge their work and their efforts, and happy to lead. Thank you.
And I just have one last little comment that I neglected. I wanted to also give my appreciation to Georgiana McDaniel and her staff. I understand that we have hired 700 teachers, new teachers, and there are still 200 more pending, and that's an awful lot of work in a short time. So thank you very much for your dedication. Appreciate that. The next scheduled meeting of the board, August 15th, is a school board workshop, beginning at nine o'clock. August 27th is a school board briefing meeting at 2:00 p.m., followed by the action meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this point, having no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Scott, supported by Mr. Armstrong. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.